Good evening, everyone. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners special call meeting is now called to order. The date is April 29, 2025, and the time is 5:34 PM. So we're gonna keep moving, and then I'll just roll call District One, District Two, District Three, and District Four. Thank you. Next, Dr. Brady will call to order the Development Authority as part of the meeting.
Good evening. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the special call meeting between the Development Authority of Clayton County and the Board of Commissioners. Today is April 29, 2025. This is a meeting is scheduled for 5:30. This is a public meeting. This is our annual joint Development Authority and Board of Commissioners meeting as required by intergovernmental agreement that we have between the Clayton County Board of Commissioners and the Development Authority of Clayton County. Welcome to that.
All right. At this time, you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to our-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Ask for the invocation to be by Dr. Bastian.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we give thanks to you, Lord, for the blessings you bestowed upon this county. Right now, Heavenly Father, you tell us always to seek first the kingdom of God and its righteousness, and all these things shall be added on to it. So right now, we ask, Heavenly Father, that your Holy Spirit take control of this meeting. Be in us so that we will be in you. We thank you, Father God, that you enlighten us with your wisdom and understanding of what we need to do to do the county's business at this time. So thank you, Heavenly Father, for all that participated, all that are here, and all that wanted to be here. So we just thank you for your blessings, your love, and your peace and your joy. Right now, in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next, we will have the adoption of the agenda. At this time, I need a motion to approve the agenda by the Board of Commissioners. All right. Is there any discussion at this time? You got a discussion?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have the motion, passes. Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna ask for an adoption of the agenda from the Development Authority of Clayton County.
So move, Mr. Jones.
Selective.
All right. We're looking for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can we pose? All right. The agenda is adopted, that's correct.
Item five will be first on the agenda. Item number one will be the update on projects from Clayton County Office of Economic Development.
Good afternoon.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Kayla Chase. I represent Clayton County Office of Economic Development. I am the project manager, and behind me is our new interim direct, Patrick E.G.K. The current updates that we have, tomorrow, we have our Aerotropolis brokers reception that starts at 6 o'clock through 8 o'clock. We have two events coming up for our Economic Development Week, our Small Business Open House, and we also have our Community Developers Roundtable. We just had our bus tour two weeks ago. We're meeting with brokers and developers to come to the Clayton County. We also have a update on two meetings that we had with developers recently that are trying to come to Clayton County. They developed things like Pont City Market and Crock Street, and that is all the updates that we have so far for the Office of Economic Development.
Commissioner Hambrich has a question at this time.
Yes.
What is it that you all have, or we're having?
So we have two events coming up for the Economic Development Week. It's gonna be May 15th and May 16th. The first one is our Small Business Open House, and the second one is gonna be our Community Developers Roundtable. We're inviting developers to come out here and answer questions as to why develop in Clayton County, and that's gonna be Thursday morning from 9 to 10:30, and then the Small Business Open House is- It's gonna be 10 to 2 on Thursday.
Will we get something?
Oh, yes. We, yes, we'll send some fires out for that.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Before we go to the next item, Madam Clerk just said that we need to have public comment at this time. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
We can have it after the agenda items, Madam Chair.
You can wait, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm gonna go and do it now. So I'm gonna see, ma'am. I'm gonna let everybody come up now.
I'm clear.
All right. First, you can go on and read the first part of the-
Yes, ma'am. The Board will now receive public comments. Citizens will have three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board with a total time of 30 minutes for public comments. Please remember to keep matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Please maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon Board members from both, from both Boards, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency clearly for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
First on public comment will be Mr. Mickey Garber.
Madam Chair, I respectfully yield the floor to the next legitimate speaker because I have nothing to comment on because I haven't seen anything yet. Thank you.
All right. Next, Orlando Gooding, you gonna? Are you gonna? Are you coming?
Yeah, I'm gonna comment. Normally, I would say public comments should go first, but in this particular case, since we haven't heard anything, what are we gonna comment on?
I'll do that. I'll let you up to the beginning. That's fine. All right, let's move right along. Next will be the approval, excuse me, the update on projects from the Development-
Madam Chair. You have someone trying to be your- And just have them come up?
Ma'am, we're gonna just do it at the end of the meeting. That's fine. All right. Next is the update on projects from the Development Authority of Clayton County.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, as well as Commissioner Hambrich, Commissioner Davis. Thank you so much for allowing us to have this meeting as it is required by the intergovernmental agreement that we have with the county as well as, as well as Development Authority. And greetings to the Development Authority Board members who are with us today. We put together brief, I'll make it, make sure that it's brief, to submit to our team as a, as a collective. Or I think you can see it in front of you. I think it's, I think it's on your front as well. Can you see? All right. So just, just a bit as to who we are, giving us the ability as the Development Authority to address commerce, trade, and given, given rise to employment as well as business development, economic development. How does that look? And how does that? How is, let's look at the vitality of economic development for our county, and how will that affect our longevity and the trajectory of this whole budgetary deficit that we may be facing, as well as to bring in help to alleviate such strong taxation on our current residents and citizens. So that's why we have, of course, a Development Authority. So when we talk about Development Authority and Development Authorities in general, the purpose is to be that infusion, is to actually be that arm where we can actually fund finance major developments that will, of course, give rise to business industry. Right now, in Clayton County, we are slated county that, that looks at business and industry, transportation. We have a large logistics industry in Clayton County. And then what we wanna hone in on is lifestyle, and that's what we've heard a lot from, even with our, our current leadership. Chairwoman has a great vision and heart for what we call live, work, play. I'm sure that we've heard that a lot, and that's something that she thrives off of, live, work, play. How do we make that a reality? How do we come together as one? And I know I would look at it as what we call One Clayton and actually address the lifestyle. Residents of Clayton County enjoy acres of green space. We have great green space, recreational activities. We're probably one, number one in the state of Georgia when it comes to rec centers. We have great rec centers. We have a great seniors service delivery model. So as one of the best locations for outdoor activities in metro Atlanta, Clayton is a community that prides itself on experiencing outdoor activities. So we have this vision of a live, work, play. How does that look in reality? We have to make connections. We have to establish a presence. How do we make those connections? How do we establish a presence? Some of the things that we've done as a Development Authority, we actually established our first annual State of the Development, which set the stage, it set the foundation for an environment for collaboration. It gave, the State of the Development Authority gave a foundation, and it gave rise to us being able to look towards measurable goals. If we don't have a foundation or a baseline, you know, we can't really, we're just shooting for, in the air. But we gotta actually have a strong assessment as to what we have, our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats. And we have to be able to then hone in on those weaknesses while keeping those strengths strong, right? Hone in on those weaknesses and the opportunities, and, and then also address the threats. We also need to look at this economic development structure for our county from a SNAPs perspective, I would say, strengths, needs, abilities, preferences. Let's really get to what we call best practice, and I hear that so often, best practice. Well, what is best practice? Best practice is something that everyone has deemed, or those that are subject matter experts have deemed this to be the best way we do business in this aspect. Well, what we're looking at is best practice is not just a way of facilitating growth, but best practice in New York is different from best practice in California, and it is different from best practice in Clayton County. So what we have to do is look at growing this county from a inside out, right? And not looking at one, one box fit all. So what is then the best, and this is, this is rhetorical question, but I'm gonna pose it to the Board of Commissioners and the Authority. What is best practice for Clayton? How do we address, what is our practice? And so that, that gives rise to what I believe is taking our story, owning our story. This is the time that we own our story. We control the narrative. We write where we are, and we write where we're going, and we actually facilitate where we're going and where we are. We own our story. So we have to look, reach forward, investing in the right external talent. We're talking about investing with, in the right external talent. For a year and a half, the Development Authority has been without an economic executive director. Now, best practice states throughout the state of Georgia that that role is, should be the, the president of the Development Authority of Clayton County. We've been without that, that office for over a year now, and we've received a lot of calls, a lot of folks come up to us, when are we gonna get an executive director? We need an executive director. What we have to do is understand that an executive director is not going to be the savior of Clayton County. It's not gonna be the savior of the Authority, the BOC. An executive director will, will give, will need tools. Executive director will need to have an understanding. Executive director would, would actually need to have a historian to, to share with him, listen, this is where we've been, this is where we are, and let's show you where the bodies are. Let's really get to the nitty gritty. They need to know. Instead of just giving someone a six-figure salary and saying, okay, you're the executive director, now all of the troubles are gone for Clayton County. That's not gonna happen. We have to collaborate, and we have to be able to put out fires. We have to address where we are right now, address the deficits, and then we can attract a great executive director. So when we look at this, this is not Chairman C.H. Bratty perspective. This is an external professional company. Development Authority of Clayton County retained the Chasing Group. The Chasing Group is one of the top groups who actually looked and executive searched for public officials in the area of Development Authority, Chamber of Commerce. As a matter of fact, our president of our Chamber of Commerce was recruited by the Chasing Group. We retained the Chasing Group, and the Chasing Group actually gave some great insight, and I wanna share that, that insight with, with you. Some of these, I don't, did we give the, our fellow, did we just give our colleagues a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Madam Chair. We have one more. All right. So this is the part where it's not all, you know, oh, I think. All right. And of course. Now, while, you know, there may be some question as to, well, is this executive session? Or is this not executive session? I have counsel here with us, and I'm sure Clayton Counsel is, Turner Reeves in the back. I just wanna highlight it to make sure counsel, if it's okay, if I can highlight some, some key points from this executive search, considering that this is executive session, you know, that could possibly be-
This can be discussed.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just wanna make sure I'm within, within the legal realm. So just some highlights, and this is what the TCG, the Chasing Group, came back with us. I was very much so inclined to really take what they had as the recommendations and would hope that we look at this as a guide for us. We talked about the background, feedback from stakeholders. Some of the processes that are in place for an executive search would, would be external and internal stakeholders. So they go out and they talk with individual stakeholders throughout Clayton County, and they, from, as a, as a, an external, you know, entity, they pool data. And so this data is very objective. There's no subjective opinion relative to the data. It's, it's actually what they've gotten from stakeholders in Clayton County. So I wanna, wanna share this with you. What is the role of a DACC? Most indicated that they did not know, other than it issue bonds. The Board of Commissioners currently operates an Office of Economic Development, which handles prospects considering like county requests for proposals and RFI's, existing industry issues, and in most cases, marketing. The Office of Economic Development is the point of contact for the site selectors, utility partners, and Georgia Department of Economic Development. However, the BOC cannot issue bonds. Now, this is, this is actually coming just from the Chasing Group. What are some, watch this, what are some of the recent economic development successes? Response, helped with Toto's expansion. Don't know of any. Don't know land assemblage to attract developers and mixed use in the mountain views. What are some of the challenges facing the community regarding economic development? Politics. Commission, so we say, commission chair and commissioners are sometimes at a disagreement, and sometimes there's disputes that are overbearing. And so when you have that, it's very difficult to get things done, and it's very difficult to attract, not, let's, let's not talk about attracting business. Let's talk about just attracting a good, sound executive director. So as a matter of fact, what happens is it becomes a paradoxical effect. You, you actually run off the top tier, folks that are interested in coming in, and they say, well, I'll wait. And so that's where, you know, the Development Authority of a county should be key. Because the Development Authority of a county, although it's a political appointment, it is not a, it, it, the, the Authority Board should not be into the politics. These are the movers and the shakers of the county. They're the subject matter expert for economic development, and so it stands aside and it looks at the numbers. Numbers don't lie. And say, okay, this is a good deal. This is how we can work. Commissioner for District One, Commissioner for District Two, Commissioner for District Three, Commissioner for District Four. What do you wanna see in your district? How can you use us? Use us? Because you, the, the Board of Commissioners don't have the, that authority or that fortitude to issue 200, 300, 400 million dollar bonds, but guess who has it? Your Development Authority. We have that fortitude to make things happen, and, and we can, and we can make them happen very quickly. So what we look at is not, we want to attract good business. We don't want good business and good industries to say, well, we gonna just wait until all of this is over, because you know what? Time is filled with swift transition, and so, you know, what, what is a fad today, tomorrow it'd be something different. So what we have to do is embrace where we are, put everything aside, and let's make it happen. Let's get the job done. So what the Chasing Group shared with Vice Chair, myself, and, and counsel was that based on their comprehensive assessment that, you know, we needed to hone in on a lot of the challenges along with our Board of Commissioners, and we need to address these challenges and at least get them to a playing field, everybody to the same playing field, and, and let's, let's, let's not look at a thousand different issues, but let's look at just, you know, let's get some objectives, maybe three to four objectives, and like-minded goals, and let's put some, some, some interventions in place that will actually, we will actually be across the board bipartisan to actually get some things accomplished. May not be able to get everything accomplished because we all have various personalities, right? Various views. But for the common goal, the Clayton County, we should lay everything aside and let's build a greater county. So you, you can see Commissioners, as far as the in-depth of what this report revealed. So there were some recommendations from this group, and one of the recommendations would be that, well, number one, they wanted to make sure that the Development Authority of Clayton County and the Board of Commissioners should enter into an intergovernmental agreement for services. Watch, they didn't know that we actually had an intergovernmental agreement, but we have one. So that's a great checkmark. All right? Here's another one. Development Authority of Clayton County should serve as a single point of contact for all economic development-related inquiries. That is typically across the board in most counties. That is the Development Authority. All current responsibilities of the Office of Economic Development will be transitioned to the Development Authority of Clayton County. Now, with that being said, I may give you the, the last one. In conjunction with the, the BOC and other local governments, the Development Authority will develop a strategic plan to identify desired businesses, industries, and understand the infrastructure required, requirements of those industry sectors. Now, we have some great leads in this recommendation. Now, there are some other recommendations in here, but these are the main three. But when you look at this, we've actually, let's address our strengths. We have an intergovernmental agreement. We entered into that intergovernmental agreement when I was first appointed, after I was first appointed to this, this Authority about a year and a half, almost approaching two years, where the, the county and, and the, the Authority was sort of at war for five years or so, and nothing could get done. When we got a new administration, we got the job done. Put away all of that, we signed and sealed a good deal for both entities, and we're off the races, right? So we have a government, an intergovernmental agreement. We actually have a comprehensive strategic economic plan. It's dated, and the last plan, which is attached as well, was completed in July 13, 2021, and that was between- And that was between, uh, uh, the Board of Commissioners and the Development Authority, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, you know, when we look at a comprehensive, uh, strategic economic development plan, uh, this plan, um, looks at the, the overall pillars of, uh, a county's strategic plan, growth, uh, economic opportunity, communication, image, fiscal responsibility, quality of life, and governance, right? So, it goes into that whole, um, assessment of where the county is, where the county's moving, and, uh, it actually has a mapping, uh, plan of between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-six. Now, what happens with these plans is we, they're fluid. So, they, they, there, there are things in this plan, this plan should be updated annually. And if need be, this plan should be updated whenever it's possible, i- if, if it calls for an update of that plan. Without a plan, we're just shooting in the air. We have to have a plan. What is the plan? So, we just can't just walk, say, you know, I want to start, uh, a Smoothies King. I, I want to start a park. Well, I want to start a, uh, downtown live-work-play area, just, just, just off of, just off of Tara Boulevard. Well, I want to start this, but does it fit in the plan? And so, here, give, this gives rise to the question, what is the master plan for economic development? We are going through a lot when it comes to taxation on the, our citizens. So, we're just, you know, but I want to pose this, and it's rhetorical, right? How much more are we going to tax the citizens until we begin to tax them out of their house? And then, we need more taxes. So, what we have to do then is hone in on the economic, strategic economic development plan. Let's now recruit businesses who will then pay taxes, sales taxes, and all that comes in. Then it alleviates the burden that's on our, our citizens. It will definitely reduce the climate when it comes to public comment. So, when, when we look at our, uh, the pillars, I wanted to just, just talk briefly about owning the story. We have to own the story. Um, we have to address these, these new challenges. It's very difficult to be able to find, uh, seventy-five million dollars when you only have forty million dollars. You can cut, you can furlough, you can, you know, you can, you know, get away with, you, 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 you can, you can actually try your best. But when you're dealing with a large gap, seventy-five million, forty million, how do you make that balance? How do you balance that? It's very, it's impossible. You have to then go and you have to look at it and say, okay, well, we have something. We have the forty million. So, let's redesign. It's okay to be able to come to the table and say, listen, let's reset. I think that's what we have to do. We have to address the here and the now, and that's only going to come with a reset. What does that look like? Is doing business in a new way. So, you addressed the new world challenges. We're at a pivotal point. Uh, we can shape, uh, political leaderships as, as changed. This is the, this is the time that we can literally change our story. Think about it. We can change our story. New leadership. This is an entirely new authority. We are ready to move and make things happen for the greater Clayton County. We have everything we need. Uh, so, innovation. Uh, innovation is key. A great quality development authority has to be innovative. Innovation merged with the Board of Commissioners and their individual innovations. And then, the chair and our chairwoman's innovation. She may not have, uh, she, she's innovative, but she may need to, the right tools to get her vision there. So, what do we do? We have to, we have to collaborate. We have to connect and make it happen. Then, we can see those three Cs come to life. Again, laying aside everything and let's address the innovation, right? Let me utilize this fortitude, this tool, the Development Authority. We want a business for twenty million. We don't have, it doesn't have to be two hundred million. I would love two hundred million. I'm hoping for a billion dollars this year. Oh, well, Chairman, that's very ambitious. I'm going to think big, and that way, we'll fall on something. That would be great, right? Strategic branding. We have to brand, 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 brand. Why do you have to brand? Because people, perception is reality. Perception is reality. We have to brand, brand, brand. I would hope that, uh, as the, the BOC, um, they're currently going through their budgeting, uh, committee at, right now, I would hope, uh, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Chairwoman, I would hope that, um, that the county, um, is a tad lenient on cutting, uh, its budget for marketing because marketing is key. Strategic branding and messaging. We have to have the same message, you know? One mind, one strength, no division. Nah, that's very difficult. That's just very presidential to say, Chairman. Yes, but you know what? Let's look at that, and let's see exactly where we can fall under that one mind, one strength, no division. May not be able to do everything together because I don't like you. You don't like me. But let's come together under, remember, those, those few points that we want to make things happen bipartisan. And let's address that. One mind, one strength, no division. Strategic branding and messaging is key. Storytelling successes and impact narratives. You know, uh, uh, at our, um, State of the Development Authority, uh, we garnered a lot of support and folks all out of the, I mean, we sold out our, our, um, the, the event was sold out. And our second, uh, uh, annual, annual State of Development Authority will, uh, will be sometime in June. Uh, that'll be coming, and we, we definitely want to see all of our commissioners there, uh, so that we can stand as one and look at where we're going for this upcoming year and address the, some of these issues more in depth, okay? Uh, so storytelling and impact narratives, very important. We have to tell the story. If we don't tell the story, who will? People are saying, well, they're not, we're not, um, we don't have any trust in the Development Authority. They're not doing anything. Do you know this, uh, uh, last year, we signed, uh, two hundred and thirty-eight million dollar bond for the expansion of Toto's. Closed on the deal. It's done. It's going to give rise to three hundred additional jobs. Out of those current three hundred jobs, two, two hundred and seventy-eight of those jobs are Clayton County citizens making between six hundred at bottom level, upwards of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. I signed the deal when I, when, when Toto said, listen, we are going to, uh, add three hundred more jobs, and they're going to be higher-paying jobs. How are they going to? Because we're going into artificial intelligence. So, the folks that we have that are currently employed are going to need workforce training because they're going to have to know how to work these machines. That's here, Clayton County, the largest manufacturer of, um, plumbing systems, high-end plumbing systems, toilets that, you know, are in, uh, the mansions that are in our, our schools, that are in, uh, the, the, the airport. I was overseas recent, um, recent months in Africa and went into the, the, uh, the restroom at the airport, and I was sitting there standing, and guess who I was standing in front of? A Toto's, uh, device from Clayton County headquartered right here in Clayton County. That's a win for us. Folks should see that. They should know that. This is a billion-dollar company. And it's going to give rise to three hundred jobs that are, that are upwards of six figures and over six figures. The Gilbert Road Project, folks have been saying Gilbert Road, Gilbert Road. We closed that deal. I think that, that deal was totaled maybe seventy-five? Seventy-five million dollars. The widening of Mountain View, uh, tho- that, that road there, it's done. Mountain View, Gilbert Road, that project is, is done, and now, we're looking at expanding in that area. Now, it's time for the data centers. Now, it's time for the, the, the real growth. We only need, remember, three, just three to four major hits. And it's going to change the trajectory of where we're going. People don't understand our story. You know, I see an individual here with a, with a N-ninety-five mask on. For instance, we, in Clayton County, house Clorox. This is the home of Clorox. Dr. Anderson, when this invisible enemy hit the world called COVID nineteen. I'm talking to Dr. Anderson. Uh, 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 Dr. Henry, Dr. Anderson Henry, I'm not referring to Dr. Anderson. I'm referring to Dr. Anderson, M.D., you know, um, considering that, uh, he's a frontline worker and, uh, and a medical scientist, right? This, this invisible enemy hit the world, and no one knew what, you know, COVID nineteen, people died, millions of people, right? Right here in the United States, it hit us. Guess what? Clorox knocked at the door of the Development Authority of Clayton County and said, we need twenty million dollars. We need fifteen million dollars. We need ten million dollars. And guess what? We were right there to issue those bonds quickly because they needed to build up to get so, they needed to get these wipes, they needed to create more Clorox, they needed to create more disinfectant. Because of Clayton County, we had, I'm for sure, we had a reduction in transmission. Of, not just in Clayton, not in Georgia. I'm talking about the United States of America, but no one wants to tell our story. So, we have to tell our story. Clorox didn't go to the President of the United States. They didn't go to the governor. They didn't go to, uh, uh, Gwinnett. They didn't go to Fulton. They came to Clayton County Development Authority and said, listen, we need movement. We need money right now because this is a catastrophic epidemic. Because we did that, guess what? We reduced, I'm for sure, we reduced, uh, those numbers. So, that, that's, that's more than a win. That's a, that's saving, we're saving lives. When you tell your story, you look past a lot of the bad part. And you address the bad part, but you highlight the strengths. Let's highlight the strengths. This is our real story. And so, we had some, some punches coming in with the, uh, with these, uh, uh, developments that were, were quote-unquote fly-by-night, but, uh, this authority didn't. As a whole, that was a, uh, you know, and even with this authority, you will always have the fly-by-night, the wish and a hope, right? But we have to have policies in place where we don't have another united situation, right? And that, those policies are in place. So, we don't have that and end up losing a lot of money. So, moving forward, uh, how do we move forward? We're investing in the right external talent. We want to fill the gaps. We're bridging the gaps. This meeting tonight should be a packed meeting. If we were telling our story, it would be a packed meeting. This meeting tonight shows that we are bridging the gap. I know that it's required pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement, but if I can submit to Madam Chairwoman, this is a meeting where we come together and we're showing that we can do this. We're bridging the gap. Flexibility in roles and, and scope, uh, with the bridge to long-term sustainability. Pilot new functions before hiring. You know, pilot new functions before hiring. I- 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 if it worked yesterday, it may not work today, and it's okay to embrace that. So, what are some of our goals? Uh, some of our goals, um, we want to update the Economic Strategic Development Plan. It's dated. And you all have a, a copy of that, that, uh, Clayton County Strategic Economic Development Plan, uh, that was, that was done, uh, by Crest. Uh, what does that look like? That looks like, uh, uh, Madam Chairwoman and, and your colleagues meeting with, um, the Development Authority and actually honing in on this economic development plan. You know, we can hire folks to go through and draft the economic development plans and then present them to us and say, okay, um, I, I approve this, but why would you hire someone to write your life? To write your plan, right? We, we live here. We pay the taxes. We're public officials. So, what we need to do is we gotta come together and let's just kind of, let's write it out, and then, let's give it to the folks that we pay and say, now, put it in the right, um, you know, put it in, put it in the right format, and let's present it. Okay? Consolidation of the economic functions under a DACC. Uh, when I call Clayton County, who do I call? Do I call the Office of Economic Development, or do I call the Development Authority? Who has, uh, the ability, uh, statutory ability to issue bonds? Uh, the Development Authority. Who has the ability to promote and have the leniency to stand outside of the boundaries of request for proposals and certain things like Development Authority? Business, industry, trade, employment, workforce, Development Authority. So, uh, that's, those are some of our goals, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Update the Strategic Development Plan. We would like to, uh, ask that the Board of Commissioners work with us uh, in, uh, this update of the development, uh, the Economic Development Plan. It's going to be key for, uh, the long-term and longevity of our county when it comes to, um, its sustainability and economic development. Consolidation, of course, of the, uh, Office of Economic Development. That is not just an external, uh, review, um, recommendation, strongly recommendation, a strong recommendation from the Chasing Group, but also, uh, from the Development Authority of Clayton County. How does that look? Well, the county is having to cut, and the county is i- in some sort of a, uh, deficit relative to its, its budgetary, uh, domain. What does it look like for the Development Authority to take that, uh, tab? And the Development Authority, Clayton County, pay, uh, and we then fund the Office of Economic Development. And that then cuts, uh, a chunk, and it allows, uh, the county to give some, the county some relief, but also, uh, it allows the quote-unquote best practice for Clayton County to be in full effect when it comes to economic development. Again, when I call, who do I call? Who do I talk to? I was looking the other day, and we, there's a, a function that's being hosted by the Office of Economic Development for small businesses. I was looking the other day and we, there's a a function that's being hosted by the Office of Economic Development for small businesses. Um, I don't know, I think it's, it's, uh, Thursday. Well, w- I, I didn't know. Someone that asked me, Chairman, are you going to be at the the small business? I'm like, I, I didn't, I, I was unaware. Two separate arms. Remember, anything with two head, two or more heads is a monster. So what we should be, we should be at the table. We all need to be one. Right? When it comes to economic development. And let's, let's be the, you know, let's, let's be the fortitude behind these individuals to my, my left and and pushing what they want to do in their, uh, their districts as well as the county, uh, as a whole. Four, uh, we have, uh, I'm sorry, three, new project TAD. We have, uh, new projects that we want to slate. We actually have some TAD funds. Uh, it's not a lot. I believe it's, um, approximately seven million dollars, uh, give or take for, um, Commercial Corridor. I believe that that falls within the, uh, the corridor, the district of, uh, Commissioner Davis, um, as well as Commissioner Hambrick. Uh, and I would like to, you know, meet with, uh, with you all to just see, how do you want to, you know, which one wants, you know, which one wants it? So it's, it's, it's not a lot, but it's something. It's seven million dollars that we can actually put to work. Uh, or if it want, or i- if if someone else wants to, wants to tackle it, um, but, you know, a ta- excuse me.
Can you explain a TAD for the folks in the audience?
Yeah, so a TAD is a tax, uh, allocation district. This is, it's, it's similar to, uh, if you would think about, um, a sploß. Okay, so a sploß and, or e-sploß is for a particular, within that TAD, it's for the redevelopment or improvement uh, of a particular district. Counsel, am I? Am I on with? Right, right, kind of, you know, I'm sharing, you know, bra- so the, okay, so there, so, so that TAD is, is for specific, uh, uh, specific um, area, district. And so with that TAD, you, you can build on top of that TAD. And we can e- e- we can also issue bonds on top of that TAD to make it whole and build something great. But that, uh, that is on the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six agenda, uh, for the Development Authority. Our ARPA, ARPA Agreement update. Uh, we do have ARPA funds, uh, that are slated to for a small business and, um, we have just a a tad bit left for workforce training, and we're going to be getting that out, uh, pretty soon. We're, we're going to need, um, an update to our, uh, uh, to our agreement. What, what was it? It's a, uh, it's an MOU that we have, uh, with the county for those ARPA funds, and it actually lists certain trainers. So we want to kind of broaden that so that we can bring in, bring in other trainers and get these funds out and also get these monies out to small businesses. Not a whole lot, but we want to go, close that door and, uh, get it done. Okay, uh, and also, last but not least, media communications, uh, assessment. Uh, looking at, again, how do we tell our story? Looking at, how do we put out positive, 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 real positive, what we're doing? It'll hold us accountable. And, uh, it, it would make us do great things. So, um, I'll, I'll yield the floor to, uh, my colleagues. If there's any, any things I'm missing, that's Vice Chair.
Well, um, I, that, that, there's a lot of points covered there, but, um, the main point that I got out of it was the fact when he talked about the, uh, two-headed monster. Um, I'm sure most of you all are homeowners who pay taxes every year like myself. But what we're doing now is the county's funding two departments, two organizations to do the same thing. And we only need one. We're the only county in Georgia, according to these folks that are doing the recruitment for us, that have two. A, a Department of Economics and a, and a Development Authority. The Development Authority of Clayton County is the only one that can do all that's needed. Development Authority of Clayton County is the only one that can issue bonds. It doesn't matter where a project starts. Most of them will end up at the Development Authority anyway. If they need a bond, a lot of them do. So that, that was the, the biggest thing I got out of, of all the different points, Dr. Brady. Um, and, and, and if, if you guys have something, you know, you guys didn't think it's, it's even more important in that, um, list of things you covered, then, uh, then, you know, I'd like to talk to you about that as well. Mike?
All right, at this time, I'm going to open up the floor to the board members, um, starting to my left, Mr. Davis. Do you have any comments at this time? Thank you. Commissioner Reeves?
Oh, I'm just curious, are we going to, um, be having those robust conversations about particular areas that, you know, mission districts want to see revitalization or opportunities then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And one of the things that we're, um, proposing is that we meet, uh, more often. Um, w- we're, we're giving updates quarterly. But, uh, and when we talk about building and making things happen, we want to, we want to meet more often. Now, you know, that was a recommendation for, uh, from the e- the external professionals and group. Um, of course, you're not going to have, there's, there are a lot of duplicative services when it comes to the Office of Economic Development and Development Authority, but there's also some separate services that, uh, uh, Office of Economic Development m- may be offering that Development Authority doesn't offer. So it's not like it's totally, however, there, there are a lot of overlapping and there's a significant amount of overlapping to where we can actually address this issue. And, uh, more, be more cohesive. And I know that, that we're just checking off the list because we have to have this meeting, but, uh, please let, let me know, uh, and let the authority know, uh, uh, commissioners, uh, what you, what your thoughts are, what we should be looking at, how can we help you, um, become more, uh, stronger in your district with relative to business recruitment and, um, organizational building, um, from an economic, uh, development perspective?
Uh, Dr. Brady, can you just clear up something so let citizens know that we aren't paying for the Development Authority? And how you all get your money, we are, uh, considered economic development a part of.
Yes.
So will you please do like that so everybody will be pleased?
Yes, so. So, so the Development Authority of, uh, of, of Clayton County exists, um, because, number one, the law says that every county must have a Board of Commissioners and a Development Authority. Okay? How then do we exist? The, through an intergovernmental agreement, we are supplemented uh, from the county. County, um, grants, uh, supplement for the Development Authority. Um, we also receive funds from the bonds that we issue. So we receive an annual, um, percent, one-eighth, uh, of a percent. Uh, and some, there, there's a difference, you know, in, in the percentages, but from those, uh, bonds, those outstanding bonds, we receive every year. And so that's how the Development Authority kind of operates, uh, essentially from, uh, a, those fees as well as that part from the, uh, subsidy from the county kind of helps, uh, make it one budget and the Development Authority moves from that, that point on.
And there are a number of counties that do have the Development Authority and, um, have an authority as well as?
Uh, office, yeah, there, 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 there are a number of counties, uh, that have separate offices of development, uh, Office of Economic Development.
There are a number of counties that have both, that have the Office of Economic Development and have a Development Authority. So there are a number of counties that have both of those, so.
Right.
This, we just want you all to know that we're not wasting taxpayers' money. There are a number of counties that have both, and so we're just, um, we want to clear that up to the public.
Right, w- right. There are a number of counties that have both entities. Um, in your metro, in, in, your metro counties, your major metro counties, which Clayton County is, a major metro county, is, um, is the only county that has a separate, um, a, a, a separate separate entity that is separate, but yet there, there's some duplicative services. So what we're, what, what I think the report showed is that you have the same, you, you have, you have more duplicative services under a department and the Development Authority. And so what, what, what they're recommending is that you take those duplicative services and you address those by placing those on the Development Authority side and your, your other services that are not duplicative services, that those continue. So it was addressing the duplicative services.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brady, and also we want to thank, um, our Development Authority for coming out today. Um, is there any other questions at this time that you all may have as well as you all may have at this time? You're good?
Are you guys there as well?
Uh, let me add one, uh, uh, one item to the agenda, and I'll be quick about it. Uh, I think for the county commissioners' position, uh, we don't want to say that it's a waste of money. As you can see, the Chase Group is trying to earmark what needs to be done. Because there's a question, who do you talk to when you come into Clayton County pertaining to economic development? You have two-headed monster, and you're not sure which one does what. And I think for a point of clarity, this is what we need to clean up as far as housing here in Clayton County. Remember, we're the only ones that can write the story. So we want to write the story to a point where you come into Clayton County, if you're dealing economic development, why not the Development Authority?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
One other comment, I'm probably the most repeated issue associated with discussions of economic development. I am standing. The, it, the discussion about economic development is that development, where it's successful, is a team sport. And the discussion tonight is, I think, a good beginning of discussions of how you organize the team to be most effective in moving forward the agenda of the people of Clayton County. So I, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. All right, at this time, um, did you want to say something? All right, I'll see, oh, Mr. Deitch, Samford would like to come and speak. Thank you.
Madam Chair and to the steering board, um, good afternoon. I just thought I wanted to echo a couple of things, um, real quick. Um, Dr. Hines is spot on about the team sport, and what's analogous to me is that you have a playbook. The playbook that you have is your intergovernmental agreement. The intergovernmental agreement provides context to the role of both boards. The question is, are we following it? So the question is, is about looking at the intergovernmental agreement, and if it's not representative of what both boards want to, then we need to go back and revisit that to make sure that the roles and responsibilities are clear. Now, whether or not that's Economic, the Office of Economic Development still under the Board of Commissioners or that moved, I mean, I think that's, that's something to be determined. But the problem is, is that the agreement that we have in place, we're not executing that agreement. That's the real deal. So recognizing that, I think, the discussion, if we're trying to find a discussion point that both boards need to have as a solvent point about the discussion is ensuring that whatever this agreement is saying both boards should be doing, then that becomes the roadmap to provide the clarity that we need. And so, uh, you know, we're talking about the pivot point, and the pivot point I hear simply is if the intergovernmental agreement is not reflecting what we think it should be, then I think that's where the discussion should start, so everybody's clear about expectations.
Also, um, Mr. COO and board members, we also need to look at the, um, schedule for updated meetings. Um, how are we going to work on those as well?
I'm glad you said that, uh, you a- uh, asked that question, uh, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, I, I think that, uh, we need to, uh, meet, uh, our, our, our intergovernmental agreement states that we will, we would meet annually and that there will be, um, every three months, if I'm not mistaken, Counsel. Correct me if I'm wrong, that we, uh, we're given, it, the, the language is very, it's kind of a tad vague. W- we, we present an update, you know, but it's just update. So I believe you're asking for more and in-depth, let's, when do we come to the table and actually let's, let's meet so that we can actually discuss deals? Let's, let's look at how can we work, and because of the playbook, uh, uh, Mr. COO, you presented it. Go further, you know, just not the, the intergovernmental agreement. I think that's kind of the start of the playbook. The, the, the real playbook should be the economic, uh, comprehensive economic strategic plan, right? Because in that intergovernmental agreement, it speaks of the economic strategic plan. That's the, when we look at that, that, uh, plan, this is the real playbook. So, you know, it, it looks at, it, uh, looks at our SWOTs, looks at everything, looks at recommendations, but then it, this is a, and we have a more comprehensive one. This is just recommendations piece, but that, that, that comprehensive, um, economic plan will help guide us and we can actually tweak that at any time, right? We can, we can change, um, issues, we can change, uh, performance indicators on that. Um, but we have to kind of be one, and we have to meet, we have to meet.
Are there any other questions at this time?
No, ma'am. No other questions other than the fact that the economic development portion of the CREST study is pretty, has an action plan. It spells out specifically what the action plan could be and how we can carry it out, and even to the, the point of what organization within the county could be the lead.
Exactly.
So I guess, again, the point would be, we have the framework, it's just about how do we actualize that in a way
Right.
to have us all on the same accord about how we attract development to the county based upon what the plan is saying. And then, as y'all said earlier, clearly and eloquently, is that if there's portions of the plan that's no longer applicable to what we need to do, then we, we don't move on that side because it's no more, no longer applicable to the vision that we're trying to cultivate.
Absolutely.
So, uh, uh, it's, it's more for the public about there's framework in place, we have a plan. It's just a matter of whether or not, how are we going to execute it? Who should be executing? And then, like anything, you have, have funding and space to make it work.
And a great example of that would be, who is the liaison between the board and economic, between us and, you know, and the other, and their organization as well? So I'm just, we just, we've, we've got to go in and look at some things and talk about how are we going to collaborate? You know, where, you know, how are we going to come together as a group and how are we going to get there? I, um, I kind of disagree on the executive director part. I think we still need an executive director. Um, if we're going to have that, if we're going to, um, be working together, because we, you know, we need project managers for every district. We need, we need all of that working together. It's not just, you know, we throw one thing out and we keep moving. We need all of that working together.
Well, to, to your, to your point, uh, Madam Chair, um, no, no, just to be clear, we're not saying that there's no, we don't need an executive. We're saying we need. No, we need an executive. No, what, so that you, so that you understand and, and that the citizens understand that the executive director, the term executive director, it's, it is recommended from, uh, the professionals that, that term, that, that title be the president of the Development Authority. When you look at certain Development Authorities, now they're, they're using the same t- title. It, it's the president of the Development Authority of Clayton County and not necessarily the econ- executive director. It's just a title. Yeah, that, that, that's the title. No. We, there, there has to be somebody to, see, we got, we need, we need somebody. Right, this is, this is, this is free. Right. And so when you look at this chasing group, you know, in depth, you go through that in depth, this is what they gave us. And they're, they're still interviewing. You know, they're interviewing right now, and so, uh, and pr- and, and, and getting more stakeholders involved because we do want to get, uh, as quickly as possible, um, a, an economic, um,
An ED.
ED, you know, so we, but we want to make sure we get the right one.
All right. Mr. Commissioner, what?
The framework is good. I think this is a fir, a good first step. But we have one person up here that was elected by the entire county, and that is the chair. And the chair, with the other elected officials, must set forth that vision. Yes, the economic, the Development Authority is a great tool. But let's remember, it is a tool for the county to use to move the vision forward for the people. If the people cannot feel it financially or see it, it does not exist. Um, I've come before you, before Development Authority, and have presented to you the District Four plan and vision, and I think that's what has to take place. You need to get with each district commissioner as well as the chair to find out what is the vision, so that we can set forth a mission that is attainable, um, executable, and advantageous for our community.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you. And, um, again, um, thank you all for coming. Um, again, that is, you know, I, I always say that we have to collaborate. So as we all collaborate together with all four of the districts, as well as the chair, I think we can come up with, um, some remaining things that we can get in every district that will move our county forward. We need to focus on sales tax dollars. We need to focus on getting things in, and we need to take the burden out of the taxpayers' bags. We can't just keep focusing on property taxes. We've got to look at other ways to bring in money, creative ways to bring in money to our county and our community. So, um, thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can we agree that, starting now, that we will go with the IGA as far as every three months? And then we can start working and talking, um, with the different things that are not in place, that we can put in place, if, instead of just the annual report like we're doing now, if we go back to the IGA and do the three-month plan? If that's in agreement, then we can close it out and do public comment?
So I think that, that's great. Um, thank you, Madam Commissioner, and we will, we, I think we can agree. Madam Commissioner is ready to go. All right, so, all right, so we're going to move on to public comment, and thank you, Dr. Braddy, and Ms. Courtney, you can go on.
Do we schedule the, when we're going to have the next meeting? Was there a conversation of what the quarterly is going to look like, first month per quarter, second month, third month per quarter?
Yeah, let's look, let's look at that.
Let the chairman, the chairwoman, and the Development Authority get together.
Okay, so, Council, can you make, make that, make sure, make note that for me? And then we'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Chairwoman, and we'll, we'll follow appropriately. Uh, all right, so, uh, Madam Chair, uh, woman, Henry, I, I guess, I'm going to, I'm going to, um, ask for, uh, a motion of to go into public comment and that it be, uh, concurrent with... Okay, okay, okay. All right, it's good. Okay, okay, got it. Okay.
Courtney, we're ready.
All right, got it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, good deal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit to speak, with a total time of thirty minutes. Please remember, comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing bodies has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency. For the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the boards.
Um, I did have, if the board is okay, I did, you want to speak, ma'am? You're not on here. What's your name?
Patricia Slater.
Okay, Patricia Slater. Yeah, it's allowed to, are y'all okay with that?
Can they just, can they just come up?
All right, first would be Mr. I got you. Mickey Garber, come first. It'll be Mickey, and then Mr. Gooden, you'll be next.
Madam Chair, Henry, Chairman Braddy, and to all the board. Uh, my pa, comment is not so much a comment as in trying to understand the situation and asking questions. My understanding of a tad tax allocation district, does that mean that only the business owners in that district tax themself, themselves for certain infrastructure? Is that correct? Okay, understanding that, the people that live in that district, who may own a home next to a business, are they also included in that tax? Are, are they exempt from that taxation? Yes, they are exempt. Uh, thank you. The other thing that I would like to bring up to all of you is my understanding of impact fees. Impact fees for the new businesses coming in here pay for some of our infrastructure. As you know, Ms. Godby, every time new people come in here, they have to have water, whether it be Clorox or a new restaurant. So I believe that impacts fees should be implemented with any new business coming in here, and the sooner we do that, the better off the taxpayers are going to be. Tax breaks, another comment that I'd like to make is the thought of tax breaks incentive for new business to come in here. Now, I, I'm a little against that tax breaks when, when they're getting, uh, coming in here to have access to our property. And our property is the selling point to the success of this county, and why? Why? Because ninety-two percent of the largest airport in the world is right here in Clayton County, and they would save money, save money because of that near access. Labor, transportation, everything that they would be buying or selling here and across the state and the country would have faster access, and that money would be flowing faster if they didn't have to go from here to North Atlanta or from here to Fisike, Georgia. Do not give them tax breaks. Anybody need a tax break is the homeowners of Clayton County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, District Three. Your presentation was very good, Dr. Braddy. Several months ago, I attended the Development Authority Board Meeting, and I said, you guys have, you're cleaning up your act because of what went on prior. The last time I was at the board meeting, I looked at the board members or the authority members. I said, you have an opportunity to do very good things, because the background of each individual together can make it successful. As far as an intergovernmental agreement, it's more of a joke as far as I'm concerned. Two heads, okay? One wants to do this, the other one wants to do that, and the only person left out is us. So as far as Mr. Garber's sur, concerned, he's right. The taxpayers should be the priority. Now, any good businessperson will know, you can't balance your books strictly on taxes. You're not going to grow your way to prosperity. You have to do them both. You covered that. What I'm looking at are two authorities or boards that don't even communicate. I just asked the question, how long has this intergovernmental agreement been in existence? Lord knows, we don't know about it. Are you guys working together or working against each other? Because if you're working against each other, we lose. Now, the background, not just when I said, the issue was the black eye from the Development Authority. But I'm not going to leave the other people out. There's a black eye on Board of Commissioners, okay? Waste, fraud, and abuse. People are getting tired of this. We have a military increase that's coming. I don't care what anybody says. It's coming. This is a Titanic, and you know what's in front? That iceberg called the deficit. You can call it whatever you want. We're headed in that direction. So somebody needs to talk to the people and say, this is what we're trying to do, and we're not going to tax you to do it. See, when I look at the analogy, you don't have a baby that comes out and wants the hundred and nine point two. Okay, it doesn't happen. We are tier one. You can have ambitions all you want. Bear in mind, it's going to be on the back of the people, and they're going to get tired of this. Let me ask you a question. I've heard several meetings. We need a sports facility, million-dollar sports facility. Who the heck is going to pay for that? The last time I was at a meeting, I heard, well, we'll float bonds. So let me ask you this question. Did anybody bring that up? Has anybody told you about this million-dollar sports facility that we have to have? So where's the money going to come from? Because I surely am not going to take my money for a sports facility, and we got issues here. That's it.
All right. Next is Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, District Three, constituent and resident, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. With the presentation, it is good to see both bodies together, Clayton County Development Authority and the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. Quick things, Chairman Dr. Braddy, you said perception is reality, telling your story, rebranding. But I, I'm going to say this, I'm going to be candid. The Roman United deal, it is a new board, but the old board made that. Their story has not been completed, and I'm going to be frank with you. I have the newspaper articles. I would have brought that. I didn't know it would be this type of meeting. They told the whole truth, and when you read the article, because, you know, they have the money to pull records, to pull, because everything has to be recorded down, that citizens don't have. And it told, told the whole story from start to finish, and when you read it, it should have been stopped immediately. I could tell from the first few paragraphs how wrong that deal was. But your previous board, if you all weren't on the board, and the Clayton County Board of Commissioners who approved you all, that's going to be another thing, did that. That man, Roman United, got, in his group, got five hundred and what, over five hundred thousand dollars. You still haven't get five hundred fifty-nine thousand. We have not heard the money. You have not gotten the money back. And I don't know the deal. From what I hear, he is somewhere in New York, if I heard accurate. The money is gone, because when they did it, and see, y'all got to tell their story. You got to be honest with the mistake the board made. You be truthful with it, because you want to tell the new story. But see, I will always be thinking about that, to know that the same mistakes was made. It seems like it was the, what the board did wrong, and he did everything right to be able to get the money. That's all I'm going to say. And you need to tell their story. You need to be truthful. The story can be told. It's, it's out there. You just haven't told it. So I'm just keeping it real and being blunt, which, as all people talk about. So when I hear all of the vision, until you complete their story, the failings of the previous board, and even the Board of Commissioners that appointed those board members, that needs to be told. And also to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. It concerns me, Dietrich talked about the intergovernmental agreement, how it's not being followed. But I've got to put fault on everybody, because the Clayton County Board of Commissioners appointed all of y'all. There's the separation, and that's what I hear. It's like, they didn't appoint. They vetted you so evidently, when they vetted you, because all of you are appointed by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. Either y'all have done a three sixty and have told them what they wanted to hear to get on the board, but then when you got on the board, you're doing something different, which is bad, and that's also bad. I'm just keeping it real, because it just was said, it's not being followed. Dietrich, Chief Dietrich was, was eloquent, and it's just not being followed. So that's the fault of all of y'all. So that needs to be cleared up too, because I don't have confidence, even when I leave, because the, the differences should not be occurring like that. Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Patricia.
Good day, everyone, and the board. Um, thank you for giving me a few moments to speak tonight. My name is Patricia Slater, and I'm Clayton County resident, and I'm identified, um, excuse me, and identified as a senior citizen. All sixty-six and older people, please raise your hand. I'm here to talk about the effect of many neighborhoods in our family, and frankly, our future self, our senior citizens and the burden of property taxes. After a lifetime of hard work and raising family, building communities, paying taxes, and contributing to the growth of Clayton County, I seem to deserve a break. Many are living on fixed income, including me, where every dollar matter. Yet they are still facing with raising property taxes that threaten their ability to stay in the home they spend and living. It is not a financial issue. No other should have to choose paying their property tax or paying for their medication. No other, no one should have to fear losing their homes that, that we work hard for. Exempt the seniors from property taxes isn't just the right thing to do. It's an investment in the hearts of our community. There are folks who volunteer mental, our young, our youth, keep our neighborhood strong and rooted. This will aid in the growth of the community, as many people want to resign, give back, build, and retire in Clayton County. Tonight, I ask this body to seriously consider a property tax exempt to our senior citizens that honor their contribute by giving them the peace and security that we need. With this note, I was informed by Fulton County do not pay any taxes, and here we do. Thank you.
Drew Andrews?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Drew Andrews, and I reside here in, uh, unincorporated Jonesboro, Madam Clerk. Um, I was unaware that you was going to have this meeting. I seen special call meeting and then executive session, so I thought it was pertaining to something else. It wasn't to, I was listening to, uh, Chairman Braddy, uh, talk about the executive director, and Madam Chairwoman was, uh, thinking along, along, uh, what I was saying. I thought you were saying there was no need for one, and I said, and there is absolutely a need for one. Um, but with this change in title, does that mean a pay increase? I hope not, uh, because I'm upset, because I am one of those property tax owner, and my property tax went up three thousand dollars. And so when you start messing with my money, we have a problem. I mean, I can tolerate, my, my tolerate, my toleration level is very high, but don't mess with my money, because we won't be friends. And that's exactly what's happening. So I'm upset. I'm disappointed, because the CARES study was done more than forty years ago, about four years ago, because I was up there, and we did that, and it outlined specifically what to do. You know, uh, matter of fact, uh, Mr., Mr. Hines, you was president over there at Clayton State University during that time. So just think, if we would have followed those, those guidance, that I, we'd be in a better situation to receive, like, the World Cup. It's coming here, but we're not positioned to get any of that money. You know what we could do? We, we could go after one of those many teams and say, hey, you know, uh, would you like to park your vehicles on our property here? You know, that's money. I mean, we leaving so much money on the table, but you taking it off our table, and that's pissing me off. We got to be smart. We got to be smart. I was at the Development Authority meeting, um, last month and Mr. Boge outlined clearly what needs to be done. We talk too much, but we lack action. You messing with my money, I want to see more action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a meaner forward. Thank you. Um, at this time, um, Mr. Reed, is there a need for executive session? All right, thank you. All right, well, at this time, on this side, we want to adjourn the meeting, I'll kind of get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Yes, it's second. All right. Any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the meeting is adjourned.